Good evening, everybody. Welcome to tonight's meeting of Troy City Council for Monday, March 16th. My name is William Wutz and I'm council president. Please make sure you silence your electronic devices throughout tonight's meeting. We will begin tonight's meeting with an invocation from Mr. Seaver and we'll go directly into the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Seaver.
Thank you. We all stand. Dear Father, as we gather today in this turbulent time, please shed your grace upon those who are concerned, perplexed, or angry as we face these challenges against an unforeseen enemy. Look after our first responders, our city servants, and all the citizens of our community, and let your word from Joshua 1:9 serve to comfort and guide us. Have I not commanded you? Be strong and courageous. Do not be afraid. Do not be discouraged, for the Lord your God will be with you wherever you may go. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Seaver. At this time, we have a presentation. I will, oh, I'm sorry. We have the roll call tonight. Mrs. Knightley, please call the roll.
Mrs. Snee, here. Mr. Allen.
Here.
Mr. Seaver.
Present.
Mr. Rozell.
Here.
Mr. Twist.
Here.
Mr. Phillips.
Here.
Mr. Swazer.
Here.
Mr. Twilliger.
Here.
Mr. Schilling.
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Now, we'll move into the presentation from Rumpie of Ohio for the Look Who's Recycling Quarterly Reward Program, and I will ask Mrs. Mayor Robin Oda to do that presentation.
Before I come out front, I want to read the letter that was submitted by Janine Hall to answer the question about why her family recycles. She says, "We recycle because we want to keep stuff out of the landfills that could be used for good. We have two little girls who are three and four. They love to take the milk jugs and laundry jugs out to the recycling bin and play basketball with them. They know that it is very important to recycle. If nobody recycled, could you imagine what our landfills would be like in 20 years when our daughters grow up? I don't even want to think about that." Janine, would you and your family come up, please?
Okay. And Jared. Jared, I had our street department, he's been calling me. He has this all up. Well, thank you all very much.
Yeah, we appreciate your recycling, and Rumpie donated a $100 gift card in here to Heron's Market, and there's also some colored pencils in here with sharpeners and some colored books and some fancy Rumpie glasses, which me and the city engineer love to wear. So, on behalf of the city of Troy, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Can we go on three? One, two, three.
At this time, I will ask Mrs. Knight to please read a summary of the minutes of the March 2nd, 2020 meeting of City Council.
Minutes of Council, March 2, 2020. Public hearings were held on Resolution Number R16 and Ordinance Number 08. Committee reports. Building and Utilities Committee recommended legislation be prepared, accepting easements associated with Halifax Villas Plan Development. Community and Economic Development Committee recommended that legislation be prepared, authorizing a filing of a petition for annexation of city property to the county. Personnel Committee recommended that two salary ordinances be amended to establish new positions within certain departments. They also recommended and approved a request of the mayor to appoint Matthew Post to the Enterprise Zone Tax Incentive Review Council. Recreation and Parks Committee recommended that legislation be prepared, authorizing conveyance of Campbell Park and Hook Park to the Troy Schools Board of Education. Committee recommended that legislation be prepared, approving a Treasure Island Non-Ticketed Use Agreement for August 1. Committee recommended regarding the sale of surplus property at the end of 636 Shaftesbury Road, and there was a majority and a minority recommendation, with majority being to authorize the surplus declaration. Safety and Health Committee recommended legislation be prepared, supporting the Ohio Municipal League's One Ohio Memorandum of Understanding Regarding Opioid Litigation. Streets and Sidewalks Committee recommended legislation be prepared, authorizing bidding 2020 paving program, and also accepting easements related to the State Route 41 interconnect project. Committee recommended that legislation be prepared, accepting easements for some completed projects, and also recommended that legislation be prepared, consenting to ODOT doing some paving work within, in the city of Troy. Resolution Number R13, 2020, paving program, first reading and adopted. Resolution Number R14, 2020, Memorandum of Understanding Regarding Opioid Litigation, first reading and adopted. Resolution Number R15, 2020, resurfacing of the ramp at State Route 41 was given first reading and was adopted. Resolution Number R16, 2020, application of Sherry Mumpower to place land in agricultural district was given hearing and reading. Ordinance Number 08, 2020, amending general plan of Halifax Villas Plan Development was given public hearing and second reading. Ordinance Number 09, 2020, amending salaries was given first reading and adopted. Ordinance Number 10, 2020, amending salary ordinance, first reading and adopted. Ordinance Number 11, 2020, filing annexation petition was given first reading and was adopted. Ordinance Number 12, 2020, the non-ticketed use agreement for Treasure Island Park was given first reading and adopted. Ordinance Number 13, 2020, declaring municipal own parcel as no longer needed was given first reading and referred back to committee. Ordinance Number 14, 2020, conveying property to the Board of Education, first reading and adopted. Ordinance Number 15, 2020, easements related to State Route 41 Traffic Signal Interconnect Project was given first reading and was adopted. Ordinance Number 17, 2020, vacation of utility easements, first reading and adopted. Ordinance Number 18, 2020, accepting additional utility easements at Halifax Villas Plan Development, first reading and adopted. Those are presentation on behalf of the nonprofit, We Love Birthday Parties. Following comments, council then adjourned at 8:13 PM.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. We'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
It's been approved, moved by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Twilliger to approve the minutes. Mrs. Knightley, please call the roll.
Mr. Allen.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. We'll move on to committee reports. We'll begin committee reports with one report tonight from the Buildings and Utilities Committee with Mr. Allen.
Committee members Twist and Allen met on March 9th related to the replat of in-lots 10951 and 10952, and accepting the dedication of additional storm and drainage easements in the reserve at Washington subdivision. It was necessary to relocate the utility infrastructure for two lots in the subdivision, requiring the replat of the lots to provide for adding easement areas. It is recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared to approve the replat of in-lots 10951 and 10952, with the dedication of additional storm and drainage easements in the reserve at Washington subdivision. This is respectfully submitted by William Twist, John Twilliger, and Zachary Allen, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Do any council members have any comments or questions on the report? Seeing none, moving on, we have two reports tonight from the Community and Economic Development Committee with Mrs. Snee.
Thank you, Mr. President. This committee met on March 9th to consider the application of Sherry H. Mumpower to continue to have 25.15 acres of ground located on the east side of Lidle Road placed in an agricultural district. This is the sixth such application for this parcel of lands. The application must be refiled every five years. The required public hearing was held March 2nd with no comments received. It is the recommendation of this committee that that legislation be, that the legislation be approved, authorizing the placement of the Mumpower property on Lidle Road in an agricultural district. This is respectfully submitted by Mr. Rozell, Mr. Twist, and myself as Chair, and I would just ask that the written recommendation reflect the correct Mumpower name on the report.
Okay.
Thank you, Mrs. Snee. Are there any comments or questions on this report from council members? Seeing none, Mrs. Snee, will you please give your second report?
Certainly. This committee met on March 9th to review the recommendation from the Troy Planning Commission to approve the requested amendment to the general plan of the Halifax Villas Plan Development to relocate the clubhouse, expand the boundary by adding an additional 8.015 acres, and rezone the additional acres to a residential planned development. This committee supports the recommendation of the Troy Planning Commission and recommends that Ordinance Number 08, 2020 be adopted to approve the amendment to the general plan of the Halifax Villas Plan Development, and this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Rozell, Mr. Twist, and myself as Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Snee. Do council members have any comments or questions on this item? Moving on to the next set of reports, Finance Committee, Mr. Swazer, you have one report this evening.
I have one. Thank you, Mr. President. This committee met on March 9th to review the recommendations of the Tax Incentive Review Council, Turk, Revard, we've got, first day with the new lips, regarding the compliance status of the Troy Town Park TIF and the five Enterprise Zone agreements that were in place as of December 31st, 2019. Such review and report is required on an annual basis. The Turk has recommended that the TIF agreement and the remaining five Enterprise Zone agreements be continued. This committee recommends that legislation be prepared, accepting the recommendation of the Turk, that the five Enterprise Zone agreements be continued, that the Troy Town Park TIF be continued, and that the city must file a annual report with the Ohio Development Services Agency by the end of March regarding the continuance of the agreements in the TIF. We support emergency legislation, and this is submitted by Mr. Phillips, Mr. Seaver, and myself as Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Swazer. Are there any comments or questions on this item? Moving on to the Parks and Recreation Committee, Mr. Schilling, the committee has two reports this evening.
Yes. This committee met again on March 9th regarding declaring as a surplus a small parcel of Archer Park to the rear of 636 Shaftesbury Road, and then offering said parcel for sale. Following the committee meeting of February 24th, the committee received questions regarding the encroachment onto park property. It is recommendations committee that the Board of Park Commissioners respond to the questions that will be forwarded by the committee, after which the committee will reconvene to forward a recommendation to council regarding declaring this property surplus, so we're asking this to be sent back to committee.
Okay. And then the second we- Are there any comments or questions on this particular item?
You're actually asking it to be sent back to the park board, aren't you? To answer the questions.
The questions have been sent to the park board. They went out, I think, Friday, and so we're waiting, we want this to send back to committee, pending receiving the information from the park board.
Do you believe any of the questions you sent to them would change the park board's view on their original recommendation?
I hope they have a discussion about it.
Discussion about selling property or procedures?
Both.
This particular property or procedures?
Both.
Mr. Chair.
Just to clarify.
Mr. Twilliger. One of the questions that was included was, you know, in light of the whole situation out there, not process, and knowing how Archer would be otherwise carved up in that area, one of the questions that's asked of the park board is, is if you're inclined to keep your recommendation, do you want to expand that recommendation to maybe include more area to declare surplus so you do it all at once?
I have no problem with that, because I think we have some people that have some inform, I mean, we're requesting that as well, aren't they?
Okay.
Mr. President.
Mrs. Snee, go ahead.
May we have the date of the next part we're meeting, if we know that date? No?
The first Tuesday of April, and that's the best I can tell you. Thank you.
So this will probably end up going to a fourth reading since we meet on the first Monday, correct? Okay. Any other comments or questions from council members on this item?
April 7th. Is it April 4th or 7th? 7th.
For the park board? Be the first.
First Tuesday, April 7th.
Yeah, first Tuesday.
All right. Mr. Schilling, I believe you have a second report?
Yes, we do. We have an agreement with GOBA. Committee members Phillips and Schilling met on March 9th to review the standard letter of agreement provided by the Great Ohio Bicycle Adventure, GOBA, relating to GOBA's participants' use of certain public property from June 24th through June 27th, 2020. It is recommended, recommendations committee that legislation be prepared, authorizing the Board of Park Commissioners to enter into a letter of agreement with GOBA regarding the 2020 stay in Troy by GOBA participants, and this is respectfully submitted by my, by Mr. Phillips and by Mr. Twilliger and myself.
Thank you, Mr. Schilling. Are there any comments or questions on this item from council members?
If GOBA is affected by the coronavirus cancellation stuff, do we need to go through the process again, or will this supersede where we go?
It's state-specific at this point, the-
That's right, the GOBA is, yep.
The agreement is state-specific.
Got it. Okay. Any other comments or questions? Moving on to our final committee tonight, final two reports are from Streets and Sidewalks Committee with Mr. Phillips.
Thank you, Mr. President. Committee met on March 9th regarding recommending authorizing a professional services agreement with Choice One Engineering Corporation for the design of the Riverside Drive Improvement Phases III and IV. The two phases include the area from Orchard Drive to the Duke Park North property line. The city is responsible for the design costs. Much of the construction cost will be funded through an Ohio Public Works Commission, OPWC, grant. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared, authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to enter into an agreement with Choice One Engineering Corporation for the design of the Riverside Drive Improvement Project Phases III and IV, in an amount not to exceed $275,000, and this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Schilling, Mrs. Snee, and myself as Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Do any council members have any comments or questions on this item? Mr. Phillips, can you give your last report, please?
Thank you, sir. This committee also met on March 9th regarding a funding agreement with the Dayton Power and Light Company for the relocation of utility poles and wires along a portion of West Main Street and the nearby areas, and further authorizing easements associated with taking part of the relocation through the Joe Reardon Skate Park. This relocation project will generally remove many of the utility pole line and the overhead wires along West Main Street from the CSX Spur Railroad to Weston Road. This is a project that would be bid and managed by DPNL, with the city reimbursing DPNL for the net cost for the work in the, in the identified area. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared, authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to enter into a funding agreement with the Dayton Power and Light Company for the relocation of some utility poles and wires along West Main Street from the CSX Spur Railroad to Weston Road and nearby areas at a cost not to exceed $1 million, and to authorize the Board of Park Commissioners to execute easements associated with the relocation project within the area of the Joe Reardon Skate Park. And again, this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Schilling, Mrs. Snee, and myself as Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Do any council members have any comments or questions on this item?
Mr. Swazer. President, did we ever find out if, or how many trees may be taken down with this whole process?
No, we won't know until the detailed design is done and the bid documents are ready to go. Again, we are looking at the east side of Ridge, so there are many less trees involved than there are on the west side.
If we can mitigate, just take down as few as possible, especially in light of tornadoes that have come through.
We're always sensitive to how many trees, and minimizing that number, and then where we can replace trees so that doesn't impact the tree line, but we can add back trees. We try to do both of those things as part of any project.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, we will move into the citizen comment portion of our agenda tonight. If you would like to speak on any of the items on tonight's agenda, you're invited to do so. Please come to the podium, give your name and address. You have two minutes to make your comments. The floor is open.
Hello, I'm Christina Schaefer. I'm the homeowner at 636 Shaftesbury Road. So, real quick, the one comment you made that you're asking the park board to evaluate if they would sell additional land as surplus, as a part of the, part of it going back to the park board, correct? That was-
One of the questions was whether or not, I mean, in other words, obviously, there's different ways to handle this. In other words, that we could say, we're not going to be selling any more land, or we could say, you know, if for some reason we want to normalize the boundaries, there may be some additional land that the park board may decide that they want to sell, and that, that is, they have, you know, that's their ability to make a recommendation back to us.
And if they're okay with selling additional land, you would have to get the buy-in from all the neighbors in order to purchase the land that's directly behind their house. And as I had talked to Mr. Phillips already, of the five houses that are budding up between my house and Mr. Cardham's house, only three of the five residents were interested in buying any additional land. So if they declare additional surplus, what happens to the two homeowners that are in between everybody, and it would still break everything up?
If I may.
You go right ahead.
As, as we, as you and I talked about, that was one of the options of either creating that whole corner.
Right.
One surplus piece, or whether it was split up into somewhat equitable spots or parcels to be let as such. All of that has to go to public bid, so therefore anybody could bid on them regardless of it, whether it's one spot or five spots. So that's the process and how it possibly could go. That's just one of the options.
Right. But what if somebody came and purchased all of it, and then what would happen for the people that had land in front of that house, you know, and then they didn't own? I'm just trying to find out if pushing it back to ask them for additional surplus at this point, are we going to end up right back here in two weeks, four weeks, four months if, if nobody else wants to purchase anything else besides myself?
That is a possibility, that we could wind up here depending on their recommendation back to us, because it's right back in their land, or their lap.
Right. But if they come back and say that they just want to push this forward again, and say their still recommendation is to sell this piece of land, then where do we go?
It'll, it'll-
Your, your two minutes is up. I'll let you finish the answer, and I'll give you 10 seconds to make a final point.
It'll be up to the park board and their recommendation, and then what comes back before this committee, the park, Rick Park Committee, and then the body of the city council to vote on.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other residents wish to speak on any of the agenda items tonight? Seeing none, we'll move on to resolutions. Mrs. Knight, will you please read Resolution R16, 2020?
Resolution Number R16, 2020. Resolution approving application of Sherry H. Mumpower to place land in agricultural district. This is on Lidle Road, and this would be the fifth such application. This is the second reading.
How do council members wish to dispose of this item? Let me just suspend. It's been moved by Mr. Rozell and seconded by Mr. Swazer to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Allen.
Yes.
Appears the rules have been suspended.
Move to adopt.
Second.
It's been moved to adopt by Mr. Swazer, seconded by Mr. Seaver to adopt the resolution. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes, sorry.
Mr. Swazer.
My hearing is bad tonight, sorry.
Mr. Swazer. Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Allen.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read Resolution R17, 2020?
Resolution Number R17, 2020. Resolution accepting the recommendations of the Tax Incentive Review Council and declaring an emergency. The council did recommend that all the Enterprise Zone agreements be continued for streeting.
Move to suspend.
Second.
It has been moved by Mr. Seaver, seconded by Mr. Schilling to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Allen.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read Resolution R18, 2020?
Resolution Number R18, 2020. Resolution accepting the recommendation of the Tax Incentive Review Council for the Troy Town Park TIF and declaring an emergency. The Enterprise Zone Turk did recommend that the TIF be continued, first reading.
Move to suspend.
Second.
It has been moved by Mr. Schilling and seconded by Mrs. Snee to suspend the three reading rule. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Move to suspend.
Second.
It has been moved by Mr. Schilling and seconded by Mrs. Snee to suspend the three reading rule. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Schwayzer?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Three reading rule has been suspended. It has been moved by Mr. Schwayzer to adopt ordinance, seconded by Mr. Rozell. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schwayzer?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read Resolution R 192020?
Resolution number R 192020, resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio to enter into an agreement with Choice One Engineering Corporation of Sidney, Ohio for design of the Riverside Drive Improvement Projects Phases Three and Four, cost not to exceed $275,000. First reading.
How do members wish to dispose?
Move to suspension.
Second.
It has been moved by Mr. Phillips to suspend the three reading rule, seconded by Mr. Schilling. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schwayzer?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Move for adopt.
Second.
It has been moved by Mr. Sch- Schwayzer, seconded by Mr. Severt, to adopt the resolution. Any comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll?
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schwayzer?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read Resolution R 202020?
Resolution number R 202020, resolution authorizing the Board of Park Commissioners of the City of Troy, Ohio to enter into a letter of agreement with the Great Ohio Bicycle Adventure, GOBA, related to use of certain public property during the June 24, 27, 2020 GOBA visits to Troy, Ohio. First reading.
How do members wish to dispose of this item?
Suspend.
It's been moved to suspend by Mr. Schilling, seconded by Mr. Twilliger. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schwayzer?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It has been moved by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Rozell, to adopt the ordinance. Or, Mrs. Knight, please call the roll?
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schwayzer?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read Resolution R 212020?
Resolution number R 212020, resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio to enter into a funding agreement with the Dayton Power and Light Company regarding the relocation of certain utility poles and wires in an area of the City of Troy, Ohio. This would provide a funding agreement in the amount of $1 million. First reading.
How do members wish to dispose of this item?
Suspend.
It's been moved by Mr. Schelling to suspend the rules?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Schwayzer. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schwayzer?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Three reading rule?
Sorry.
The three reading rule has been suspended. Mr. Schwayzer moves to adopt the resolution.
Second.
Mr. Rozell seconds the motion. Are there any comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll?
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schwayzer?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. That concludes the resolutions for the evening. We're moving on to ordinances. Mrs. Knight, will you please read Ordinance O 82020?
Ordinance number O 82020, ordinance amending the general plan of the Halifax Villas Plan Development, PDR, in the City of Troy, Ohio, and rezoning an 8.015 acre parcel added to the Halifax Villas Plan Development as a part of the amended general plan from AR, Agricultural Residential Zoning District, to a residential plan development, PDR. This has been recommended by the Troy Planning Commission. This is the third reading.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. How do members wish to dispose of this item?
Move for adopt. Second.
It has been moved by Mrs. Snee to adopt the ordinance and seconded by Mr. Phillips. Are there any comments or questions from council members on this item? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schwayzer?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read Ordinance O 132020?
Ordinance number O 132020, ordinance declaring municipal owned real property is no longer needed for municipal purposes and authorizing the sale of such excess property. This is the second reading.
I believe the committee wishes for this to go to a third reading?
That is correct.
Thank you. Mrs. Knight, will you please read Ordinance O 192020?
Ordinance number O 192020, approving and accepting the replat of in lots 10951 and 10952 for the dedication of additional easements for storm sewer and drainage in the Reserve at Washington, Section 1 subdivision in the City of Troy, Ohio. This has been recommended by the Troy Planning Commission. First reading.
How do members wish to dispose?
Move to suspend. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Schwayzer to suspend the three reading rule, seconded by Mrs. Snee. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Schwayzer?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Three reading rule has been suspended.
Move to adopt. Second.
It has been moved to adopt the ordinance by Mr. Schwayzer, seconded by Mr. Phillips. Are there any comments or questions on the ordinance? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schwayzer?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, I'll ask you to read the last ordinance of the evening, Ordinance O 202020.
Ordinance number O 202020, ordinance authorizing the Board of Park Commissioners of the City of Troy, Ohio to execute easements with the Dayton Power and Light Company for the relocation of utility poles and wires through the Joe Reardon Skate Park in the City of Troy, Ohio. This is the first reading.
How do members wish to dispose?
Move to suspend.
Second.
It's been moved by Mrs. Snee and seconded by Mr. Phillips to suspend the three reading rule. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schwayzer?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
She called Bobby, and you answered for her.
Are you still, are you still waiting for Mr. Twilliger? And I said yes. I believe the three reading rule has been suspended.
Do it again.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It has been moved by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mrs. Snee to adopt the ordinance. Are there any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schwayzer?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight.
You're welcome.
Moving on to communications and announcements. Are there any this evening, Mrs. Knight?
No, there are none.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Moving on to comments. Mayor Oda, any comments this evening?
I do have some comments, if you don't mind.
Please go right in.
I just want to address the pandemonium that's been going on this week, and I just have a statement to read. This past week, this past weekend, and today have been rough for the city, for its residents. We are in uncharted territory, and we are all feeling the uncertainty in everything right now. Things are changing daily and sometimes more than that. My goal is to keep City Hall open and the city running. If we are advised or told to do otherwise, then we will consider our options at that time. We are concerned for our businesses and restaurants especially, and are hopeful that residents will give them as much business as possible, especially over the next few weeks. At the same time, I am asking you not to stockpile supplies. If we shop as we normally would, stores will be able to maintain, and everyone will be able to get what they need as it is needed. But it will take everyone letting go of the panic and just living normally. We are taking our cues from the state and the Miami County Health Departments. We are constantly monitoring the situation as it evolves. We will keep you updated along the way. Please be calm as you find your new normals. This may last a while, or it may not. Be kind to each other, help your neighbors, check in on those around you, and remember, we're a community, and that's what we do. Thank you. And that's it.
Thank you, Mrs. Oda. Mr. Titterington, do you have any comments this evening?
Yes, sir. A couple of minor ones, and I'll round back to the COVID-19 plans that we have in place right now. Annual spring cleanup, community-wide, will be April 13th through the 17th, pending any changes that are dictated from on high. This year, we will be including, for the week, brush pickup. So, if you, if a resident wants to put it in a pile like they would during the fall season, we will, we will pick that up. Back to the COVID-19, we are, as the mayor mentioned, monitoring the situation. We're getting usually updates at least twice a day, and as you're all aware, the situation continues to evolve. We are asking, we have not closed City Hall. We are, however, asking people on social media and signs on the door that if you don't need to come into City Hall, don't come into City Hall. We have the Dropbox in the front of the building. We have avenues to pay online, file taxes online, file zoning permits, occupancy permits and the like. So, we ask people to use that and minimize the public being in the building. Today was very limited interaction. I think people are just naturally staying away and staying at home or isolated. And so, we'll continue to watch that and also what other communities around us are doing. We have, I know the Recreation Board has closed the arena to everything except for, they have some reimbursements, some refunds between recreation program, parents and staff, but other than that, nothing else is happening there. We've also, the golf course is open, the shoreline and food service is not. I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Is there any word on the senior citizens center?
It is closed.
It's closed as well?
Until April 6th, I think.
Thank you, Mr. Titterington. Moving on to Director of Law, Mr. Kerber. Anything to add this evening?
I have nothing to add. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kerber. Our auditor's not here. I have nothing to add. Do any council members have any comments that they would like to add this evening? Mr. Phillips?
Thank you, sir. Excuse me. Had an opportunity to go to a doctor's appointment today, and even the doctor's offices are limiting the folks that come in. So, off of the mayor and Mr. Titterington's comments, if you don't have to go out, don't. If you need to have a person accompany you because of physical ailment or some other necessity, that apparently is being allowed. However, if you are able to motor on your own into doctor's offices and other places, they are really, really cracking down and trying to limit exposure to everyone. And it's the youth or the younger portion of our population that I believe the governor and even the president today made comment about that really need to assess their behaviors and then contacting older folks, which I fit in that category, that numerical number. Others may have immunosuppressant issues, heart issues, liver, and other diseases that, medical conditions that can be affected inadvertently, even with the best of intentions. So, even though some of this is a little overexcited, we do need to take the appropriate precautions to flatten the curve of the exposure to this thing. So, patience, as the mayor indicated, is great, and our community is outstanding in doing that sort of thing, but we just need to guard against overexcitement. So, thank you.
Wise words, Mr. Phillips.
Mr. President, I do have something to add.
Yes, go ahead.
I was looking, evidently, the election is on tomorrow.
Yes, it is.
So, I think we should tell everybody out at home that.
The election is on tomorrow. All right. Excellent. Mr. Twist?
Clarification on the spring cleanup. They are to put all their yard waste in the trash that we picked up during that week, the 13th through the 17th.
Correct.
Yeah, just one.
Business as usual after that day.
Correct.
So, no need to have a call and alert them that they have extra brush out or anything?
We'll be looking for it.
Yeah.
Any other council members have any comments this evening?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mrs. Snee?